Happy New Year. On behalf of the staff and my fellow board members, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for January the 10th. We've had a few items that have been postponed and will not be heard this evening. So if you're here for item 1T2406 here in Wood, that item has been postponed, will not be heard. Item 26750 Oak Hills Drive has been postponed and will be not heard this evening. Item 6866 Rock Spring has been postponed and will not be heard this evening. And item 86075 Deramoore Road has been withdrawn. So if you're here for any of those items, we will not be taking them up. All right. So as a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately. In the order shown on tonight's agenda with the adjustments that I just mentioned, there will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief and to the point. Comments by the neighborhood association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this helps provide a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. So I'd like to take attendance.
So noted.
And I'll lead a motion for approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals minutes of December 13th, 2022.
So moved?
Support?
I have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So let's call the first case, which is item 1, excuse me, 2T.
Hi. Happy New Year, everybody. My name is A.J. Schmamme, 2434 Brayton Avenue. I'm the owner. I'm looking to get approval for the shed that I have in my backyard, 10 feet by 12 feet by 14 feet. I had received approval earlier or mid last year, but I messed up on the height, so I'm coming back to get approval on the corrected dimensions.
This is the one I believe that there's a variance and shows as being a...
This is 2P, our permission request.
The variance from Suffolk has been granted, was granted from the location.
Okay. All right.
This is going to rectify the heights of different...
Okay.
And just for further factual, we did approve a height of nine feet, but due to the change in the grade, you need something higher than that. I think we were noticed for 14 feet, and it's approximately 12 feet.
Yes.
Okay. So are there any other questions from the board on this item? Then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here would like to comment on it? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any questions or a motion.
With respect to the property located at 2434 Brayton Avenue, I would move to approve the permission request because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The applicant has previously been granted the required variances for the encroachment. The actual structure itself is compatible with adjoining properties and appropriate for the neighborhood, and it's not objectionable to the neighbors because of any fumes or noise, et cetera. If this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screening may be required to screen the shed from public view if they're able to see it after...
Of course.
Yep, support. So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So we're calling the next item, 1P6506 Spruce. This applicant here. You can state your name and address and summarize your request.
Hi, everybody. My name is Karen Yono. My address is 6506 Spruce Drive. And I had an existing six-foot fence, but it was wood, and it kind of fell apart, so I had to take it down. So now I want to put a vinyl fence up, and I'm matching it actually to the vinyl fence across Maple. So I need approval for that. And then also, my fence ended like maybe one quarter of the way through my backyard, but now I want to take it all the way back. For some reason, the people that are behind me, when they pull in their circular drive, their lights come right into my dining room, and they can see me. And it's just very, I don't know. Doesn't feel good. So basically, that's it, and I really need the fence for safety. I'm right on Maple, and yeah, that's it.
So just to help everybody, on this picture, the black line is the property line. The red line is the six-foot fence.
Okay.
Is that right?
Well, no, because the fence is on the property line. It starts at my garage and goes down. I think the red fence...
What is the red line, then? Could you clarify what the lines are?
So I think the red line is there was no fencing there. So, oh, Randy. Oh, it is the fence. Okay, this is Randy. He's doing my fence. Come and help me, Randy.
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe Randy can tell us where the fence is.
On the west side of the property, the black line is the property line. However, there's a drainage ditch right there.
Okay.
So we have to bring it off the property line roughly six feet to be on the inside of the drainage ditch, because it's all lined with concrete. There's no way.
So the red line is the six-foot fence?
Correct.
The blue line is the four-foot fence?
Correct.
And the black line is roughly the property line?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Great.
Any other questions from the board on the lines or anything else on the fence?
What stark white is generally something that stands out? Are we mitigating that color?
Doing tan.
It's on the screen.
I believe it's tan.
Oh, it wasn't up there when I looked last.
And you know what? We did it to match the fence across Maple that I can see, so it'd probably, so it'd look nicer. Great.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone would like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the dimensional variance at 6506 Spruce Drive, I would move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome and, in fact, would decrease the safety that the homeowner is entitled to at their property. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors. In fact, they're replacing in some places an already existing six-foot fence. And the circumstances of the property are unique in that they are on Maple Road and do have some light intrusion from the adjoining property, which certainly is not something that is self-created. If this motion is passed, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction, and evergreen plantings are going to be required to screen the fence from public view.
Support.
Okay, so one thing about the evergreen. Yeah. I...
So hold on a second. We're in the middle of a motion. All right. So I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Nope.
Is there, well, let me ask. Is there mitigating circumstances that would make evergreen plantings impossible to grow?
They've died.
Every time.
Every time, they've just died.
There's a lot of trees there, and I've planted twice already.
Let me, let me, let me suggest that we do have evergreen plantings, but that they are not going to be designed to screen, immediately screened from public view, but suggest some kind of climbing ivy that will take care of the shade and will grow up on the fence.
Last time, and actually, I thought it looked worse. I mean, I don't know if, you know, it just...
Now, we do want to try and mitigate the view of this from the public, so let's give it a shot.
So it'll be on the public side?
It's on the public side, not on your side.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I could look at maybe shade, something others.
All right. So is there any other discussion on the motion that was made? So Bob, is your, are we clear on what?
Yes, we are.
The screening is? Okay, so I have a motion, a second and discussion.
If what's your name's clear, then we're clear.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So going with the next item, 2P7178 Lasser Road. This applicant here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move, I'm going to motion that we move this item to the end of the agenda.
Support. So I have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move that to the end of the agenda. Calling the next item then, item 1, which would be 3335 Burning Bush.
Mr. Hart.
Eaton Street in Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. I'm here representing Kristen and Mark Soule. They have an emergency generator that originally was against the house, and it's kind of made it very crowded with the addition and some of the work that we've done to add air conditioning equipment. So we had to get the generator away from the current location, which was right off the back of the kitchen. We worked very closely with Kathy Weisenborn and the Village Board of Trustees and the neighbors to come up with what we think is a good solution for this location. It's behind an existing barbecue structure in the backyard, and it is, it's probably furthest away from any of the neighboring properties. If we put it on the side of the house where it would be allowed to, it would be within about 20 feet of our neighboring property to the east. So we thought this was a much better placement. You can see the challenges with the trapezoidal-shaped property, and we felt like this was probably, we could have put, we could have fit it within the setback requirements, but when it cycles on, it can be disturbing to the neighbors. So we thought this was the best location to be the least intrusive. We do have the Village Board approval as well.
Any other questions from the board? Your geometry teachers would be pleased with your use of the word "trapezoidal," Mr. Hart.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone would like to comment on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. With regard to the appeal at 3335 Burning Bush for the variance for the generator, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the unique shape of the trapezoidal lot. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason that it's screened from view and is behind some hardscape. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given again, the, you know, the setbacks and the shape of the lot, and certainly for these reasons, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting, although I'm sure that's already taken care of.
Support.
Yes, we do show arborvitae's being planted around the perimeter.
Yes, thank you.
So I have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So item 2's been postponed, so we'll move to item 3, 6060 Snowshoe Circle. This applicant here. State your name and address and why you need a variance.
My name is Mary Moore, and I'm at 6060 Snowshoe Circle in Bloomfield Hills. And we are hoping to put a generator in kind of the front of our house in a recessed area. There's no room on the side where the garage is, and on the other side, there is, it's very close to our neighbors, so it would probably bother them. The place we're looking at is at least 120 feet from the road, and you can see the recess to, closer to the garage, kind of butts up against the garage. And that's where all the electrical and everything is. So we're hoping to get a variance on that.
And you have screening planned for it?
I don't have it up yet, but we will...
Not up yet, but I mean, it's planned?
Yes, planned, yeah.
Okay. Could you tell us what the screening is?
We're thinking about arborvitae's in the springtime, but I didn't know how, where they were going to install it if they did, so we didn't do it this fall. Just kind of wanted to wait.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. You know, with my not-so extensive knowledge of generators, yet, isn't there a minimal requirement of 10 feet from any kind of window that can open?
Right, and it will probably come off, I would think.
So it'd be 10 feet from those windows?
The installers actually came up with the plan, so I'm assuming...
Okay, yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just want to make sure that it's done safely.
Oh, no, no. So it's probably zoomed in a little bit too much in the picture, because it will probably come off 10 feet, I would think, from there.
Yeah, I would think so. And it appears that, you know, those are opening windows on that fixture. I just would want to make sure no fumes would come in to negatively affect you.
Yeah. I'm assuming...
I just had a quick question. What is right behind the garage? It looks like there's a lawn area landscape or a putting green?
A putting green, yeah.
I don't...
Yeah, it's a putting green.
Is it?
From the previous owners, yep.
Okay. So there's extensive landscape there where it might otherwise work.
Yeah.
Well, I think the way it's tucked in with the garage going forward, we don't usually like to see them in the front yard.
Yeah.
But I think with it being tucked in and hidden by the garage and the screening that you're talking about, being appropriate, application.
Any other questions, board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here would like to comment on it? Close the public hea...
One quick comment. Looks like it's...
So wait a second. You have to come up and give your name and address.
Warren Simon, 2680 Kentmore Road, Bloomfield Township.
It looks like those windows are your garage windows, so is that...
No, those, the two windows that were in that picture were...
So hold on. So it's, you, are you done with your comment?
Yes.
Okay. Please sit down. Anyone else would like to comment?
I...
Close the public, I'll close the public hearing. Done?
Okay. I also submitted a picture of the other side, which is the, yeah, the View West, and that's the garage right there. Those windows, one is a powder room and one is a laundry room. But like I said, it's, I mean, I'm sure they're planning on setting it back at least 10 feet, I would think.
So township will coordinate that?
They're drawing a permit, so...
Yeah, so the permit process will address it. So now that we've got all that information, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion in regard to the appeal at 6060 Snowshoe Circle for the dimensional variance to locate the generator in the front yard. I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards of practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the lack of other viable locations on the other three parts of this lot. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of it being tucked in beside the garage, and those are the unique circumstances, it not being self-created. Should the variance be, a motion be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. And in addition, evergreen planting shall be required to screen the unit from public view to meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 4, 1775 Shonath Lane. You can state your name and address and why you need a variance.
I'm Sabrina. I'm with Moser Design, representing the homeowners of 1775 Shonath Lane. I would like to kind of begin with the permission variances for this one. So we are kind of requesting permission to build a sport court, a pool cabana, a pergola, and a gas fire pit, all within kind of the rear yard setback. It's relatively straightforward, but I will answer any questions kind of at the end. Regarding the sport court, we will also be requesting a dimensional variance as we are requesting, we had a mistake on our plan. We are actually wanting to request a six-foot tall mesh net instead of an eight-foot tall. We are requesting this as it kind of goes along with many other sport courts in the community that have the six-foot tall fences that allow balls to not kind of go into outside of the sport court or any neighboring properties. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the, excuse me, permission requests and requests for dimensional variance at 1775 Shonath, I always call that Shaneth, but we'll let that go.
Lane. Rooster Tail. Rooster Tail.
Yes, yes. I knew them. I will start with the permission request and move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structures will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of the property due to their location or their utility. And as regard, with regard to the dimensional variance, I would move that it also be approved as presented. The applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because, in fact, we need to curtail, curtail the items that frequently elude the immediate location of the sports courts. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. We have, in fact, no objection to those. Circumstances of the property, I think, are reasonably demonstrated. In order to have this utility, you do need to make certain provisions, and I don't know that those provisions themselves can easily be met by virtue of the property itself, so these are necessary. And of course, because of this circumstance, the, this issue is not self-created. And so with that, I would move that in the event this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction, and the use of the sports court is to be limited to its daylight hours with no illumination on the sports court permitted.
Support. I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
So it's six feet tall?
Mm-hmm. Correct. Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, request is granted.
That's right for this one. Oh.
Calling 1928 Heron Ridge, another sports court, so...
Yes, so this one, we are also requesting a permission variance for a sport court that is within the 16-foot setback, and it is also kind of outside the range of the wetland setback as well that's on the property. Regarding the dimensional variance, this one, we are requesting an eight-foot tall mesh net around the sport court. The reason for this in this specific project is there, the closeness to the wetland, we don't want any balls or any people kind of disturbing the wetland or any opportunity for that.
And on this one, we have a dimensional variance because we have a sports court accessory use located on a lot with it already, without an already existing residence, and the reason the lots can't be combined is they are in two different school districts.
Mm-hmm.
So sort of an interesting feature to this.
Yes. Somewhat unique.
Somewhat unique. So any other questions? I'll open this up for a public hearing. Anyone would like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion in regards to the, it's a dimensional, well, I will do it dimensionally.
It's both, permission and dimensional.
So for the permission requests at 1928 Heron Ridge Drive, for the accessory structure, the sports court as shown on the drawings, I move to approve the request as submitted based on the information provided. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42.76 standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with the adjoining properties and the joy, and the size of its own property. The use of the sport court is appropriate in this neighborhood. We're seeing them a lot as an accessory to our residential properties, and the location will not hinder any of the neighbors and has taken into account any natural features. So regarding the dimensional variance, I also move to approve the variances requested for the eight-foot high fence. Based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate practical difficulty in that the eight-foot fence would be required or would be useful to prohibit anything going into the natural features setback. And I guess it is a dimensional variance also to permit this accessory structure on a lot that doesn't have a principal dwelling due to the unique condition that it is one lot with two school districts. Should the motion be approved, all, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. The use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours, and no illumination as proposed is permitted.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your second one is granted. Item 6 is been postponed. We're now to item 7, 2900 Wood Creek Way. State your name and address and the need for variance.
Good evening. Kevin Monahan, 2900 Wood Creek Way, Bloomfield Township. Seeking approval to put a generator on the secondary frontage that goes along Wood Creek. The issue we have is in the back, as you, if you go back one picture, you can see we have a patio that, right there, just on the picture on the right, which is the only place in the backyard to put it. And then I have the issue with the window right there. So we want to put it on the side of the house. It's covered by a number of large pine trees plus incremental trees on the Wood Creek side where there's 12 arbres that we've just put in plus four mature maples. So the neighbors won't be able to see it or hear it.
Any questions from the board? No questions? Open the public hearing. Anyone would like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion. So with regard to the dimensional variance for the generator at 2900 Wood Creek Way, I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome given the layout of the home and the patio in the backyard and the placement of the windows near that patio. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it will be screened, and there are unique circumstances with the property, again, given the layout of the home and the patio in the back. And none of this is self-created due to the reasons stated above. All necessary permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to installation. And it sounds like you have enough screening, but in the event that that changes, just note that the generator will have to be screened 12 months out of the year from public view.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So item 8 has been withdrawn. We'll move to item 9, 4456 West Maple.
Hi, my name's Chris Morgan from Chris Morgan and Associates. I am the designer and builder for 4456 West Maple. We're looking at constructing a new home on this property. The existing house was demoed a little while ago, and the existing house sat 45 feet, two and a half inches off the lake. We are asking to be allowed to be, build a new house 50 feet off the lake. We are asking to be allowed to build a new house 50 feet off the lake. You can see on the site plan that the 100-foot maximum setback per the ordinance cuts right through the middle of the property, leaving us, on average, about 35-foot-wide building envelope. The line to the left of that is actually the 500-foot average, which actually goes into the neighbor's property. So, we feel like with the unique characteristics of this lot that this is a reasonable request. The neighbor across the bay is only 33 feet, five and a half inches off the lake, and I think it's worth noting, too, that we won't be negatively impacting the house to the west of us. They'll still have the same view to the lake. The majority of our footprint will be in line with their four-car garage, and right now on that western property line, which you should see in the packet I sent you with the pictures, that property line is heavily screened with tall arborvitae, so we feel like it's a reasonable request and that it's not going to negatively impact them, and it'll allow us to build a house that's in keeping with other houses on Wing Lake.
Got a question.
Go ahead.
So, it says for a remodel, but in fact, you're starting from scratch on this house?
Yeah, I don't know why that said that.
I know.
That was a mistake.
Because that, to me, makes difference. I understand that you've got, you know, issues related to the setbacks, but part of your encroachment is a result of the particular design of the home that you've selected. We've had a lot of people in the past work with designing homes that will curve along to maintain the setbacks so that there is not as much encroachment as you're requesting. Have you looked at any other designs, or is this simply, this is the design they wanted, so we put it on?
Well, we've looked at different ways. I mean, part of it, obviously, was we wanted to take advantage of the view of the lake and set the house at an angle so that if we don't set the house at an angle, we're looking... The bay at that end's not very wide. We're right on West Maple, and there's one other house across, and they're right on top of the lake, and we'd be looking directly at them. And so the lake is all to the north. So, we wanted to angle the house to take advantage of the view, which, of course, pushes that rear corner towards the lake. And like I said, to work with that building envelope, the middle of the lot is... The building envelope's 35 feet towards the back. It's more like 15, 20 feet wide, so it's... There's really... I mean, you really couldn't design a house of any size that would fit. And like I said, we're going to be further off the lake than what the existing house used to be. We're going to be five feet further away. And it's really only the corner. If you look back at the architectural plan, the architectural site plan, the corner...
Is that corner feet by one?
Oh.
Just have to press that top red button here.
Okay. So, that corner there is 90... I think it's 92, 93 feet off of the lake right there. So, this corner, which is the corner of the kitchen, and that corner, which is actually a covered porch, are the only two corners that'll be at 50 feet. This is all further away. And like I said, we're almost compliant at this corner over here, and this area right here, the building envelope here, is, I don't think it's even 20 feet wide right there. And about right here, it's 35 feet wide.
That was a good explanation.
[laughing].
Good question.
Lot of numbers.
Any other questions from the board? Open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to comment on this? If you could come forward and state your name and address.
Is that closer to their neighbor? Brian Ritter, resident at 6800 Franklin Road, Bloomfield Township, Michigan. I am the architectural representative for Wing Lake, Inc. And we are strongly opposed to the size of the structure on this property because the variance in and of itself is so excessive. The home that was there prior to this was only about 1,730 square feet, and it's not shown here. Well, you can see it there, where its impact on the piece of property itself was nominal. If you go and you look at the larger view, this home is essentially three times the size on its livable square footage, not including the unfinished walkout lower level as advertised. It's a 5,000-square-foot home that they're proposing. So, while we understand that the home itself, or the property itself, is rendered unbuildable as far as Michigan is concerned, we think that a lesser variance might be more appropriate for this piece of property. There's no true hardship in the fact that somebody wants to build a 5,000-square-foot home on a piece of property that can't simply support a 5,000-square-foot home. And we also want to include, and I know that this may not be a portion, but there is an environmental impact on the lake. We, Wing Lake, Inc., do environmental studies on the lake every year. We monitor the phosphorus levels, all the nitrates going in from fertilizers and everything else. We even monitor, and we've hired people to pick up the goose poop on the beaches so that we can maintain the lake. We feel that this home on this piece of property will negatively impact the environment, and there's no true hardship as far as building a 5,000-square-foot home. There could be a variance that could be granted, which we believe maybe half of what they're asking for would be reasonable and still allow a substantial home on the piece of property. If you see, and if you look carefully, you'll see that the building could be pushed a little bit farther to the left, could be pushed a little bit farther to the south, and that would aid in that encumbrance. So, with that, we, as Wing Lake, Inc., are opposed to this variance and its approval.
I think in the applicant's presentation, he said the former house was 45 feet off the lake, and now this one's going to be 50.
If you look very carefully, it's only a small... I mean, it's a... How to place the pointer?
Oh, yeah.
You may have to blow it up. Is it possible to blow it up a little bit? And he does indicate the line on there, and it's a very, very small corner of the property. So, the variance of that five feet is nominal at best.
You're talking about if you're comparing the former house with the footprint here?
Yeah, if you compare the former footprint to the new footprint of the home.
No, get that. Bigger house.
1,730 square feet of livable space versus...
Yeah, no, I get it. It's bigger house.
Yeah, I mean, it's substantially larger.
We can do that one. That's a good one.
So, if we get...
But your other one, and I know we're not supposed to talk, but the other one actually shows the dotted line, so it's the difference between the two.
I just thought, if you had a picture of the former house and then the...
Yeah.
Here's the former right here, and it's...
Yeah, just, I like to line it up with the...
That's the previous house, is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's the previous house.
And there's just a small, very, very small corner that actually projected into that space, and it is the corner that's closest to the lake where you see the little...
Yep, got it.
Walk going down.
Okay, that's helpful. Any other questions?
At what point... Well, I'll ask. I'll wait until the public hearing's over.
Okay, so, any other comments?
No, I believe I think I'm...
Okay, thanks so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? If you could come forward, state your name and address. So, will just one of you speak? Are you a sort of a couple?
Well, yeah. I mean, I... Yes.
Okay, so just one of you would speak, so...
Yes.
You decide and...
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. My name is Janand DeLu. Well, good evening. I reside at 4476 West Maple Road, Bloomfield Township. So, I'm the neighbor next door, and this... I totally oppose this construction as far as... I'm the adjoining neighbor. My use and enjoyment of the lakefront privileges is being potentially infringed upon without moving parts showing that there is a burden on them, you know, building a smaller property. I've been living there for 15 years, and, you know, I just hope that this might set the new way of people knocking down homes and building that much closer to the lake and, you know, taking away the beauty of the setback and the natural views of the property.
Okay.
You realize, of course, if they build the house further to the north within the setback, you would lose more of the view than you currently are likely to lose.
Can we look at it? Can you put it back up and see?
So, you just addressed your comments to us. Well, you can ask him to do that.
Can you guys put that up?
Okay.
To see exactly where...
Right there.
Can we show our property?
Well, it's...
It's right there.
Yeah, we... The building envelope extends further to the north than they're currently proposing. Right now, that... And if they were to do the best... If they were to change their plan, they could, in fact, push that as far north as they were allowed within the building envelope, which would eliminate your view.
It would block our view.
Kind of reminds me of the condos on Maple down at Porton Lake where they had great views until they built a new home.
Okay.
And that's...
Well, I think it's probably the size also, but, I mean, if they... If you guys are okay with it and it's not going to hinder our view...
Well, I was just pointing out...
Okay. As long as it's not going to hinder our view as next-door neighbors of this beautiful lake, and that's why we want it, you know, to be there, we're, you know, we have no issue.
Thank you for your comments.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? So, you don't...
Can I just make one clear?
No, you can't. So, you're...
About pushing it to the south.
Well, no, that's what you suggested, but the building envelope goes to the north.
So, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the applicant, who can now address us with any response.
Right here, up here.
So, Mr. Morgan? Mr. Morgan, could you?
Okay, to address a few things. First of all, this lot, I think, is actually... It's not that small of a lot when you look at the size of it. It's just an L shape. And then, it is a 4,500-square-foot house, that's true. The neighbor to the west is, according to the records, is a 5,800-square-foot house. We're building smaller than that, and I'll talk to them later, but the way this house is setting, and I know the way this is zoomed in, you don't see... Like, I show their house on my site plan, and actually, can we show that?
Yeah.
Kind of lines up with their garage.
Mm-hmm. So, if you look to the west, you see the line, and then it jock... Where's that? So, you've got this, that step in, and then that. This is all garage here. Now, they do have a dormer above that, so I'm assuming there must be a bedroom or something, but this... And then this is all heavily screened, I assumed by the homeowner next door that did that, I would imagine. So, this is all screened. The screening comes to the end of their driveway. So, you can see the corner of my house right here is in line with that driveway, and that was purposeful. I didn't... My goal was, if we took a line and drew it across here, that their cone of view was not being blocked because their house steps purposely so they could see the lake. And again, the lake is mostly up here, so I don't feel like if they really saw, and we kind of walked them through this, that they would see that... In this part of the house, it's a prairie-style home, 512 pitch. This is the single-story area, the two-story area's over here, and then this is single-story here. So, the height of the building in this area is 29 feet, 10 inches, and this area over here is probably more like maybe 15 feet tall. And we're down, the grade is sloping down here, so we're... They're going to be able to see right over top of this area with their dormer from their second floor. And as far as the other house is concerned, you could see there's that corner of that house right there that's sticking out, and that line, that line is close, or as close or closer than the one corner of my house right there. Everything else is going away from the lake. And again, yeah, it's a 4,500-square-foot house, smaller than this house, and smaller than a lot of the houses on Wing Lake. So, I don't think it's... I think it's in keeping with the houses on Wing Lake, and, yeah, we could have pushed the house to the west, but that just puts me on top of them, which I didn't think was a good idea. And if we push it further to the south, we're on Maple Road, so, you know, obviously... And I've got a front-entry garage because I didn't have room to do a side-entry. There's a berm across here that's landscaped, a block maple that's there, and we're going to keep that. So, I didn't have room to do a side-entry garage. So, you can see my driveway to get turned in, I'm close to the property line. So, really, moving that forward would be very difficult. Not saying it would be completely impossible, but I feel like this house really fits the lot properly, and it's just up the, you know, up the way here to the north, a lot of the houses are, you know, 200 feet off the lot, off the lake, so it makes it, you know, very difficult. And you can see that line, the actual setback, the average, goes into the neighbor's property, so, yeah. So, again, I feel like that's reasonable.
Can I add something?
No, you can't. So, you have to sit down. I know this has got a lot of different pieces to it, but the public hearing is closed, so no further public comment. Any other questions of the applicant?
My question... Please, mics are up loud. My question deals with the amount of communication that's existed between the applicant and the homeowners' association, because I almost got the impression that you haven't talked to each other until today.
So, my understanding that the homeowners' association for this is that that was not the homeowners' association that this lot is a part of. I reached out to, back in the fall, I reached out to the homeowners' association. I found them online. I sent them an email. They got back with me like two months later after I had submitted this, apologized, said sorry. I said, "Yeah, I was trying to find out if there's any deed restrictions, yada, yada, yada." And I said, "At any rate, I'm asking for a variance," and I submitted the plans to them for their approval, and I've never heard from them again. So, I made an effort, and Young &amp; Young got a variance on this property like, I think, in 2018 for 60 feet off the property line, something like that, or off the lake. They put at that time on their application, because the homeowner shared this with me, that the association was inactive. So, I put that on my application because I had not heard from them. And like I said, they finally got back to me, apologized, but they never gave me any comments whether they approved or disapproved. But it was called like Sly Two or something. It wasn't Wing Lake Association.
So, the person ahead of you was presenting it as Wing Lake, Inc., LLC. Is that correct?
Yeah, but I don't think that's the homeowners' association for this lot. At least, that's not what I contacted.
I don't think that's the Wing Lake Association. I think it might be something different.
Might be. I don't know.
What is it? Through our... Through our...
It's Sly Farms Two, and it's operated by Wing Lake, Inc.
Yeah, it's identified as...
It's all under the same group.
It's identified as Wing Lake Farms, Inc.
Yes.
And there is a building plans chairman, which is Brian Ritter. There's a president, Chris Fitzpatrick, the secretary, Tom Barnes, treasurer, Linda Vance, and vice president, Michael Mattens. So, there is an association.
That was the association that you reached out to.
I'd have to look at the email. I don't remember the names of who responded. It was two people that responded via the email. I don't know if that was you or not. That was you? Okay.
And I responded to them.
Oh, I never... I must have gone in my junk or something because I never got a response.
So, I offered to answer any questions.
Yeah, and did you get the plans I sent you?
Got it. Okay. Public comments over.
Okay.
All right, so I think we have a picture of what has happened or not happened. Is any thoughts here? So, I'll turn mine on. I think it's coming through. Sorry. No, they're up too loud. Could be. Okay, so we have comments from the association. We have the presentation and explanation as to why the house sits where it is. We have, uh, the presentation and explanation as to why the house sits where it is. Anyone have any thoughts on what we might do here to serve the residents of...
My, my initial, yeah, well, okay, so, my initial reaction is I would, I would actually prefer that the applicant have an opportunity to communicate with the homeowners association. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to approve or not approve something based on the homeowners association's decision, but at this point, um, I think regardless of whatever, whatever, what we end up with, um, communication between the applicant and the homeowners association is going to, um, help, um, both the resident of this property after it's constructed and the neighbors in the community after it's constructed. And I, I don't, now, whether that's appropriate or not, I don't know, but that's my, that's my reaction.
I agree.
I, um, I had some questions, but I thought they were answered very well tonight and frankly, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yeah, see, my, my, my observation in looking at this, and I'll just share my thoughts, Carol, moving the property closer to Maple is silly. It creates a variety of issues that, that I don't think are appropriate for, for any homeowner, whether, whether this one or another. The size of the home is not out of whack with the community. It's actually not as big as some of the others.
Yep.
Um, putting it further to the west simply...
Creates more hardships for other...
Creates more hardship for the owner to the west. Um, and in fact, if we still need the space, moving it to the north is not inconceivable, which, which deteriorates the view even further.
And that's exactly why I think I'm prepared to make a motion, everything you just said.
And that's, what's ironic is the purpose of that setback is to protect people's view. And in this case, if we actually try to adhere to it, it would make it worse.
Correct.
I, I think, I just want to add to what the chairman just said, to protect people's view, but I also think part of its intention is to protect the lake. And I would just note that while the encroachment may be, you know, five feet less, you can't argue that there's, it's a, you know, larger part of the home that's encroaching than what was previously existing. And, you know, I guess maybe lucky for you, you don't, you have six other people here, maybe you don't need my vote, but, um, as, as it stands, I'm opposed to it because of how close it is to the lake.
I agree with Stephanie. When you see the picture of the, the yellow part, it's fully more than half of the house forward of that line. And I do think it is about the lake as much as any single neighbor. Um, when I look at the space between those houses, like this neighbor here, you know, from their driveway to the property line, I mean, it's pretty close to that property line. Is that really quality property there for the new people or the current residents? Or is there not a problem in moving this back, the five feet or the 10 feet? Previous house was approved at 60.
The other...
So, I mean, that's a lot of property right there that could better be given to the lake, the, the breathing of the lake. And I do believe this homeowner's view to the lake isn't going to be impacted by any of the things we're talking about. That's their garage there.
Yeah, one of the, one of the concerns I...
That's a lot of property.
One of the questions I have, and the architect, I think, referenced it, is the garage. If, if we move this property further to the west, the ability to drive a car into the garage...
Well, or park. Where do people park?
Or becomes impossible.
They've got to have some area for visitors to park.
Then you, I mean, you literally...
It could be in that turnaround where the walk is. You can back out of your garage, you know, that's a pretty generous...
Not if you move the house to the west. All of a sudden, all that's gone. All that space is gone. The reason you have that space is because of where the house is placed. Anyway, go ahead, Carol.
Yeah, let's, let's make a motion.
Well, there's no point because I'm listening to everybody and it's not going to pass, so...
Well, I don't know that. I don't know that to be true.
I, I can count.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm not making a motion.
I mean, I just believe as an architect that there is still a way backing out of that garage into where the sidewalk is to get a turnaround and come out front ways on, on Maple. I do believe that's absolutely essential for everybody's safety, that you can get turned around and come out on Maple. But if we're timed out five or 10 feet moving this house, giving five or 10 feet to the lakeside, I think those other issues can be resolved in my professional opinion and would make me much more comfortable with the amount of that house.
So, do you feel that based on the comments you've heard, you, you'd like to look at this again, talk to the homeowners association? What's your, would you rather just, would you rather we vote on it the way, way it is? Because we can do that.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is people want to do a motion to table it.
Well, I, I, I want to hear from him.
Okay. Two, two, two things. One, do I, can I comment on anything that Glenda said just to, or no? Is it beyond that?
Uh, so we have two architects. I guess I'd rather not sort of be back forth with the architects. You know, we could have Kevin Hart come in and talk too, so I...
Right. Well, okay, so, um, the position I'm in is I need to, I need to get a vote tonight, unfortunately. So, that was kind of the...
That's fair enough, then.
Come in.
Then we need to make a motion. So, Carol, I think you should try your motion. Let's, let's fair it out to votes first.
Can you move it back five feet right here tonight or it would have to get knocked?
I, I could, yeah, I, I would tell you this. So, again, it's only the corner of the kitchen and the corner of the lanai that are, are at that 50 feet. Everything else is back from that point. I know I could probably, if I could get, um, what would it be, I guess, 45-foot variance? If I could get a 45-foot variance, I could manipulate the garage and a couple of things, take a few feet off of there and then slide the house over a foot or two. I think I could get 55 feet without dramatically changing the home and keep everybody happy.
You're backing it up five feet.
Pardon me?
You're backing it up five feet.
Backing it up, turning, turning it...
No, I would have to, I would have to modify the kitchen, kitchen, mudroom, garage area.
Yeah, it could rotate, I mean, a simple rotation might be enough.
And maybe two, but...
I'm not, I'm not the architect.
Rotating it this way, the geo, the way the geometry works, as I rotate that, that the house, it, it pushes that, it pushes north a little bit and then, again, the neighbors to the west, where this is, I'm not blocking their view and that's why. But if the lake setback is more important to everybody, I can, yes, twist that and pull that, you know, off the property line. I just, my feeling was the biggest thing, because we were at the end of the bay, there's no other properties around me and it's only a corner, I felt like the most important thing is to not encroach on the neighbor and to not be any closer than what the, obviously less than the 50-foot minimum allowed. So, I, that was what I was kind of keen on because, again, the 100-foot just doesn't leave us anything to work with. And so, I knew I was going to ask for a variance, I figured I might as well try to put the house in there in a position where it works good from the road, looks good from every angle, and then, and doesn't block their view.
Five feet.
Does five feet...
Five feet does a lot for me, not whether it's the angle or that corner, on just keeping more respect for the lake.
Can we do that? Can we reduce the ask in right here or do I have to read?
As long as the request is less than...
Right, less than, we can, we can grant a lesser variance than what was known as...
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, let's, let's roll.
Carol, do your magic. You know how to put these together.
Yeah, he addressed his footprint in whichever ways he is to just five, five more feet and I...
Yeah, I can meet her there.
I don't know what we're doing.
This is the way things are passed in the, in the real world. We're in the real world. So, let's make a motion.
Do what you were going to propose in some fashion.
I called the question here.
All right.
I'm just saying because you know how to structure it better.
With respect to the property located at 4456 West Maple Road, I would move to approve the request for a dimensional variance because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome based upon the location of the property on Maple Road, the shape of the lot and the curve in the lot, which makes it difficult to locate the house to meet ordinance requirements. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors based upon the explanation given tonight. The house has been designed to have the least impact on the one adjacent neighbor that would be able to possibly have any impact. The unique circumstances I've already described, and this is not self-created. If approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I would also add that we are approving this with the building being adjusted so that it's a maximum of a 45-foot variance from the 100-foot lakefront average setback. Support?
Motion and support.
Eddie?
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Do you roll call? The key?
No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ford?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Rosati?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Meads?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Your request as modified is granted. Thank you. Following item 10, 5033 Moore Valley Lane. Take your name and address and need for the variance.
Hi, my name is Roman Barrett at 5033 Moore Valley. Um, I purchased this property in October. Um, I did purchase it mid-construction. Um, during one of the, our, when I met with the building inspector, um, he stayed, basically stated to me that I'd have to file, um, a zoning variance for the storage room above the garage that was already on the blueprint that was approved. Um, I'm not sure why I need a variance.
So, it's, you have a non-conforming, uh, structure and you're building up, you're expanding it up, so you're not, you're expanding the footprint out, but you're going up, so you need a variance.
Um, this was already done when I purchased the home.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Existing non-conformity.
Yep.
Yes.
So, you didn't have anything to make it non-conforming, it was, that's what it was.
Okay.
So, are you good? I think we're good?
We're good.
All right. Open the public hearing. Anyone like to comment on this? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 5033 Moore Valley Lane, I'm going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because we're simply expanding over an existing footprint, but unfortunately, the existing footprint is already non-conforming. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Uh, the home sits in a unique location on the property that would not impact, um, the surrounding property owners. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated in that we do have an existing non-conformity, which certainly was not self-created by the current owner. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must, all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support?
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Item 11, 7480 Bingham Road, Glens of Bloomfield Apartments. So, you must take your name and address?
Hi, yes. My name's Stephanie. I'm the property manager at the Glens of Bloomfield, 7480 Bingham Road. We're requesting a variance for secondary signage. We have, um, two purposes for replacing and adding signage. One is to update the logo with the new ownership's, um, designs, and second is to direct properly to the leasing office, which is not in the main entrance off of 14 and Deep Run. It's actually up on Bingham Road.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the board? So, the, the design review board, I know, went back and forth with this quite a bit. They're happy with the design. I think it's improved. And I drive by the, this complex quite a bit.
Me do too.
The other signs were quite dated and part of the reason, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at this is the logo that's, that's on it is added to it. So, just as additional background, so open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on the signs? Close public hearing, bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for a dimensional variance at 7480 Bingham Road, I again am going to move that the motion be approved as presented, all of the standard, because the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. In fact, I drive by this location frequently as well and the signs needed to be updated...
You never say aye when you drive by.
I'm going, I'm going east, you're going west.
I'm sorry, I interrupted your motion.
Yeah, and, uh, as a, um, the signs were dated and, um, candidly unattractive, and I believe the new design is very much in line with who Bloomfield Township is. Um, there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. The adjoining neighbor primarily is Telegraph Road and I don't hear them complaining. Um, unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, um, again, because of the need to send people to the leasing office, I recall having tried to show property in there once and it was not easy to find, um, and that certainly was not self-created. So, with that having been said, um, if the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits obtained prior to installation.
Support? Motion and support. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted. Following item 12, 6450 Telegraph.
Oh, yeah, it'd be great. Oh, yeah, it was terrible.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Paul Deeters. I'm with Metro Signs and Lighting, 11444 Caltz Avenue in Warren. Uh, here before you this evening for the board's permission to install some panels in an, in two existing monument signs. First Merchant Bank took over, uh, that site from Level One Bank. Uh, at the time, Level One had some small identity panels in the two ground signs, requires variance approval, so we're here to just replace that out. The, the existing ones that said, uh, Level One have been blacked out because they're, they're no longer in business and we're just asking to replace those with First Merchant's copy.
All right, pretty simple. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to comment on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. So, we're just new bank putting new signage.
Okay, I can make a motion. This is, uh, number 13, or no, sorry, number 12.
12, yep.
So, at, um, 6450 Telegraph Road, I move that the dimensional variance be approved as presented based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because the, um, because of the thorough fear being on Telegraph and Maple, two major, uh, roads here in the township, um, potential customers of the bank need to be able to see that the bank is there. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that neighbors or other commercial businesses that have similar signs. Um, unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, um, given the location on Telegraph and Maple, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All of your applications, are, all of the, um, necessary permits for this application have to be made within one year and should be obtained prior to your installation.
Support?
So, the motion is supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Item 13, 6675 Telegraph.
Mex Restaurant. Mex Restaurant. Can't wait till the renovated Mex Restaurant is open.
Oh, so you've not closed them?
No, big renovation.
Yeah, I was surprised, because I'm going, wow, I think they've closed.
Big, big.
Okay.
They had signs up in the lobby.
I'm Donna with InterCity Neon, 23920 Amber, Warren, Michigan, 4889. We're here requesting a second sign above the entrance. They're in the process of remodeling, and they're updating everything. The current sign is no longer, is down right now. We're refurbishing it, going to put it back up, so that it's all black, and they want to add a second small sign, just a small sign above the door.
Okay, pretty simple. Any questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
I'll make a motion. So, with regard to the appeal at 6675 Telegraph Road for the addition of another sign, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, because there is no, the compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, based on the fact that this sign is relatively minimal compared to the entire other signage on the restaurant. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that it is a little lowered, and maybe this secondary sign will add more brand recognition, and it is not self-created due to the reasons I just stated. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
So, I have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 14, 1845 Telegraph.
My name is Scott Munchnick. I'm with Scott Munchnick and Associates, representing BMW of Bloomfield Hills. We're here before you tonight to request a variance for the acreage of the property. You require 10 acres. We only have 8.2. This was previously approved when the project was started. Because we're adding the addition, we have to come before you again for the area. The property size has not changed, so...
And what about the flagpole?
The flagpole? We're requesting a new flagpole that will be similar in size and scale to other flagpoles that are along Telegraph Road from, starting at Square Lake and going north, some of which have already received variances for their size, poles and flags. Large flags, poles and large flags is part of Penske's corporate standards for his dealerships, and we would like you to approve this to let that continue.
Any questions from the board?
I guess I don't understand why the height of the flagpole can't comply.
Well, the size of the building and the property support a flag of that size. There's other flags of similar size in that area across Telegraph, down by Square Lake, and a number of, and I think the one over by the oil dealership is also larger than standard size. So, there is...
You mean higher?
Higher and larger flag, too.
Is that true? I can, we don't, we don't have, we don't have the documentation that would be able to validate. Yeah, I just, I don't understand why it can't just meet the ordinance requirements. I mean...
It's 30, and you want 60.
Yeah, you can still put the flag on it.
Hi, I'm Jeff Anderson. I'm with Penske Automotive Group, and we are requesting that. Could it comply? The answer is yes, it could comply. Like Scott said, our corporate standard is to have a certain height flagpole at all of our stores. That's what we try to put at all of our stores. Carl's has a flagpole that's larger than 30 feet. The oil change place has a flagpole that's larger than 30 feet. The Jeep store has a flagpole that's larger than 30 feet. You've been accommodating to those businesses. We're just asking for the same consideration. So, you know, if you choose not to...
I do the one for the Dodge dealership. I do the Dodge dealership.
The Dodge dealership does have a big flagpole.
I remember that meeting.
Yeah. I know the auto dealership, whatever that is, 12 and Telegraph, that's a big, big flag, too.
Just a bigger, it's just a taller lightning rod.
We still would, all the setbacks, the flag would still not be larger than what's allowed per ordinance. It's really about the height of the...
It's the pole, it's the flagpole, not the...
That's correct, yeah.
So, that's the issue.
I want it. I got it.
Bigger is better.
I got it. Bigger is better.
This is taller than, taller is better.
Penske always goes big.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's...
Penske goes big.
It's just a taller lightning rod, that's all.
Won so many car races.
Is it fair to make a motion?
Yes.
Wait, so, with the public hearing, anyone like to comment on this? You sure? Close the public hearing. Bring it back.
So, I would like to make a motion with regard to the dimensional variance, the appeal at 6675 Telegraph Road for the dimensional variance for a higher flagpole. Do I have the right address? I'm sorry.
1845.
Hello. 1845 Telegraph Road.
There we go.
Apologies. For a dimensional variance to allow for a flagpole exceeding 30 feet and to expand the existing non-conforming use. I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, based on the fact that the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. There are other places of business on Telegraph Road that have similar flagpoles, and we're just talking about the height versus the flag size. There's no injustice to these neighbors, since they too are flying high flags. The unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that, you know, they've been operating this dealership as is for quite some time, and it's not, it's not self-created based on the fact that it's a dealership on this size property. It's been this way for a while. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
Good thing it doesn't need evergreen screening.
I want that flagpole screened to the height of the wall.
All right, let's, let's get it under control here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
And we got, we got one that was postponed.
This is the 2P.
So, are you the...
We were postponed to this, this year.
Oh, oh, I didn't see that.
You're not on this.
So, you're not, you're not 7178 Lasser.
Where, what are you?
Surrey.
Well, you have the right township.
Very familiar with Surrey.
I thought you could see it.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda for that. You know, I had a message from Wade Urkel that he confirmed that we were on the docket for today's meeting.
Uh-oh.
You did not have it on the agenda, or was it noticed?
Yeah, so you understand.
Wade is going to have to buy them dinner or something.
Yeah, because I specifically, we will, we'll call you tomorrow. Yeah. He's been waiting on you for a long time. Okay, what is that? We will put you on first to the next meeting.
Depends on what you're asking. What are you asking for? Why not?
Don't answer it.
I'm just kidding.
He's kidding.
He's out of line.
He's kidding.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So, you're worried. Well, I will say, the fact that you sat through this entire meeting is a mitigating factor.
Yes, it is. It's a matter of fact.
You still have the one that was tabled to the...
Yes, so we have 2P, 7178. So, it's a...
This is the one that was presented at last month's meeting, and the gentleman who had presented it and then mentioned the fence, and so we had to notice.
Had to re-note it for 12 feet.
Sports court was heard, but the decision wasn't made, because once you mentioned the fence...
Everything stopped.
Wait, we're on, we're on Branton, aren't we?
No.
No, 2P.
It is 7178 Lasser Road.
2P.
Sports court.
Oh, okay.
So, I wasn't at the last meeting. I was hoping to get the presentation. I mean, it's not critical, but...
And I wasn't at the last meeting.
So...
So, now this is a new item for you to consider.